Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to March. I promise spring is around the corner. We are well into our budget season and this meeting this afternoon is a part of our work session. Tonight, we will hold a public hearing to hear citizen comments on the budget. And without further ado, we'll go ahead and get started. We have two parts to our work session today. The first part is going to be primarily our discussion on the budget and some comments that we discussed from our last meeting. And then, we will wrap up with discussion on the academic calendar, which we're very much appreciative for those who submitted their comments about the calendar. Dr. Boone, the budget.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. Our update to the budget today is twofold. One, as we indicated last week when the budget was presented, that we had not received the calculation tool, the Calt tool, from VDOE yet to be able to flesh out what the impact on the General Assembly adopted budget would be. So actually, that posted while we were in the meeting and so they, Ms. Ingram and Ms. Toh have gone through that. And so, we will update the board on adjustments that had to be made based on the final General Assembly budget. The second piece that we want to share is that we, there were certain, there were some questions about positions and what certain things would cost. We are prepared to talk about what those cost estimates are for certain things. And so, with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Ingram.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, school board members. This afternoon, like Dr. Boone said, I'm going to basically give you an update of what, from what was presented last year, last week. Of course, we always begin with the priorities and then the theory of action. What was presented last week was our budget was based on the Governor's proposed budget, which was based on our March ADM was 336,398,829 or 6.8 percent over the current year's budget, which is approximately 2.1 percent increase. The amendments to the budget based on the General Assembly, the General Assembly adopted their amendments on February 24th. Now, it is not complete. What happens now is that it goes to the Governor for signature. And the Governor has certain options that he can do. He can sign the budget with no changes. He can return it to the General Assembly with amendments. He can return it to the General Assembly with vetoes. And then, he can return it with some combination of vetoes and amendments. And then, on April 3rd, they will reconvene a veto session to consider any amendments or vetoes that the Governor has proposed. And then, unless the Governor signs that with no changes, then the budget comes final. But if he does not, then it does not come final until the session convenes and he signs and it becomes final. So there still could be some actions from the state on the budget. What's different is what I want to highlight for you this afternoon. If you will recall, when we presented last week, we talked about the Governor's proposal for the salary increase. Well, the General Assembly does have the 3 percent and the 2 percent in their adopted amendments. But the changes are that the 2 percent salary increase will become effective September 1st versus July 1st that was proposed in the Governor's budget, which typically means for July and August, the state will not provide any salary increase. And we typically give our salary increase at the beginning of the year. So basically, they are funding 10-month positions and not 11- and 12-month at the beginning of the year. The other change is, you recall that we were talking about the 3 percent and the 2 percent and that there will be some combination if we gave a salary increase this year and next year as to what will meet the criteria so that we will receive the funding. That also changed. This current year, we gave an average of 3.1 or 3.2 percent salary increase. And the Governor said, whatever we did this year would go towards that 3 percent and could possibly go towards the total 5 percent. What the General Assembly says, whatever we gave this year, we will only get up to 3 percent credit for the salary increase. So if we gave a 3.2 percent, that .2 percent will not go towards the salary increase for 2020. They'll only count the 3 percent for this year. Now, the 2 percent for 2020, we will have to give at least a 2 percent. But what we are proposing is an average of 3.1 percent. So technically, as far as salary increase it goes, we have, if the budget is approved as proposed, we would have met the criteria to receive the state funding for salary. And that's why we often say, you know, we need to look at the details because when you hear a 3 percent or 2 percent salary increase, no one talks about when the effective date is or how it's being utilized. So that's what we rely on by getting that Calt tool and they really share with us all the details. Another change was the staffing formula for counselors. What I'm showing to you today, so you can see the comparison currently in the current column is the staffing that the state funds, the Governor proposed, and then the General Assembly's action. You will note that the General Assembly adopted amendments, it's not as generous as the Governor's. So therefore, if we were to do the calculations, instead of funding an additional nine position based on the General Assembly, we only have to fund an additional three position in order to meet the staffing criteria. The junior preschool initiative, as you recall as well, we did not include that in the superintendent's proposed because the criteria was different in the General Assembly version, the Governor's version, the House version, the Senate. They were all different. So we had told you, once we got back from the General Assembly, then we will include that into the budget. So that will be changed as well. What is different from the Governor's proposed is he was proposing no local match. Well, the General Assembly is saying that there is a required local match based on our local composite index of 29.58 percent. So the revenue we get from the state is 801,000. Local required match is 336,000. The Governor was giving us the full 1.1 million in state revenue with no required match. So that's different. What I also want to talk about is the difference between the federal's funding and when it's included in the state. Federal funding, you have the dollars no matter when the students are enrolled. With the state calculation is based on our enrollment on September 30th. So if we do not have all of the students that will equal $801,000, we will not get it. For instance, if they were funding for ease 100 slots and on September 30th, we only had 75, we will only receive funding for that 75. So what's different now is with the state, I'm sorry, with the federal budget, as students come into the program, we have already received the funding for that year. So it doesn't matter whether we serve 100 or 75, our funding doesn't change on the federal, but on the state, it will.
And I think one of the pieces to remember about that is that, just as with our K-12 students, we enroll year-round. And so, we can continue to enroll beyond September 30th, but we won't receive compensation for those students who enroll after September 30th. And this is a big shift in terms of meeting this. They will fund only based on students who are fully enrolled and in this system as of September 30th.
Ms. Campson.
So about what percentage of students come into our pre-K, these VIP classes after September 30th? Do we have like a past record of how much, how much change that is?
We do have a record. A lot of times, when parents have sought the enrollment, they may not complete the process till September, late September, October. So I know Ms. Malinak is here and she's given us some information, but about what percent, Ms. Malinak, you think enroll after September 30th?
For regular VPI?
In general, for our VPI.
Yeah, about 98 percent enroll by September 30th.
So about 2 percent of kids.
Right. But so, the money follows the student as of September 30th.
For the funds that the state is going to allow us to have when the grant ends, what are the criteria that we have to fulfill for the students in those slots?
I believe it then follows, and I'll check with Ms. Malinak to be sure, it follows the general VPI expectations that again, we are serving the students from families that the poverty level is 200 plus, 200 percent below the poverty level. So the state is just now bringing additional dollars into the VPI program, but with the same criteria. The other piece on this, and Ms. Ingram may be getting ready to say it, but let me go ahead and also include it, is that the VPI Plus grant covers 100 percent of what goes on in the classrooms, the field trips, materials, supplies, and all of that. The state is giving us this money and so, we're having to figure out what the true cost is of a classroom. But, so we currently have nine VPI Plus classrooms. I cannot say to the board today that if the board includes this in his budget, that it would be, continue to be nine VPI, an additional nine VPI classrooms as a one-for-one offset. Because there are costs associated that the state is pretty much just picking up the salary cost of the teacher and the teacher assistant. So we'll have to anticipate the other costs that are not borne like they are during the federal, through the federal grant.
So as a summary, the revenue changes, reduction based on the change in staffing requirements and requirements for the salary adjustment, our revenue went down a little over a million dollars. And you, I added the VPI Plus funding such that when the decision is made, how we're going to implement it, it will already be in the budget. So the net total change is $236,000 of reduction. So the adjusted superintendent's proposed budget is 336.2 million dollars. These are our proposed reduction to balance the budget. To reduce the school counselors from nine to three position, we will lessen the budget by six FTEs for $390,000. We will eliminate the pre-K specialists for the classroom observations. In the General Assembly budget, they eliminated that funding that was going to be at the state level to provide grants that we could apply for to have professional development. We are in a conversation with the State Department to see what their criteria is going to be, whether we still have to do the observations now or whether there will be a phase in. Right now, they just have not decided. So we took those positions out of the budget for right now.
And if I can also say for that one, because of the very strong position Norfolk Public Schools had taken regarding the observations, I'm actually in conversation with folks from the state on Friday afternoon about the cost. And based on what Ms. Ingram, Ms. Malinak have shared, we hopefully will be able to give voice for how we roll this in or phase it in, but we've taken those out.
Without it being an unfunded mandate.
Exactly. Because right now, it is.
Okay, so with the reductions and adding back, what we did on the VPI side was, the state has given us $801,000. So we just put it on the expense side, $801,000. So the net impact is, I guess you could say, zero. The expense went up and the revenue went up. Whenever the decision is made as to what will be done with the VPI Plus, then we will know we have funding in the budget to cover it. If we do less than the 801, we receive less dollars, so you have less expenditures. So just to keep the budget balanced, I'm putting on both sides.
Can you go back to finish off the rest of what you have, the light bulbs and the GPS?
Oh, I'm sorry. Whoops. We had in the budget, we were changing the funding for light bulbs at the schoolhouse. The schools were getting an allocation to change the light bulbs and the fixtures. And we were going to bring that centrally and let that be handled by the Facilities Department and increase that allocation because it wasn't sufficient for what was needed in the school room. What we're going to do is try to pre-fund that for, from this year. So we reduced that out of the 2020 budget. The GPS, we have, you knew we had the RFP on the street. We have made a decision and based on the company and the negotiations that we had entered into, the savings that we will have from that contract is $108,000. We had projected $200,000 for next year, but the actual is going to come in less than that. So we reduced that to be in alignment with that contract.
Ms. Martin.
I have a very, it's a small question. So when you talk about the light bulbs and you said in the classroom, is that also on the exterior property?
It's all of it.
It's all encompassing?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So in total, it's 336.2 million dollars based on the General Assembly's adopted amendments and a March ADM of 27,234 students. And that is just a summary by revenue. State revenue will be 197.5, which is a reduction of 200,000. State money, city money remains the same. All the other monies remain the same. So the total reduction from what was presented last week to this week is basically $200,000 in the overall budget. Next steps, we do have tentative works, boardwork session for next week. And then, on March the, I'm starting to go back, March the 6th this afternoon, we will have a public hearing. Next Wednesday, there is a school board work session that's scheduled. On March the 20th, will be a school board work session and hopeful budget approval at its regular meeting. And then, of course, we have to send the budget to the city on April the 1st. And these are tentative dates of city action. What we know so far, they would be holding a public hearing on the April 10th, May 14th the adoption. And then, once the school board adopts the final budget in June, then we can allocate the resources to be available to all schools and departments on July 1st. So that concludes basically the changes from what was proposed last year.
Last week.
Last week. I keep saying last year. Thank you for the, and based on the General Assembly's budget.
Now, there were a few areas that the school board had asked information on. And so, one, the cost of reading and math specialists. We indicated those are roughly $70,000 per position. We currently have, I think it would be seven reading specialists that would be needed for every school to have a full-time specialist and five math specialists, excuse me, that would be needed to close that gap for 12, so that's roughly $840,000. Also, since last week's meeting, had an opportunity to talk with some principals. And we've discussed what has been some opportunity for flexibility with the reading specialists. For example, a couple of schools that had a .5 math, .5 reading opted to convert their .5 math into a, to reading and making it a full-time reading. ADL does not have a reading specialist. The principal asked that he voluntarily gave that up and would not have one. So that's why ADL didn't have one and we can document that request. The other requests, the other information point is the cost for gifted resource teachers and each one runs pretty much the teacher, what's, roughly that same 70,000 per position. We shared with you information regarding, we've already talked about the guidance counselor piece. Each attendance technician, roughly $35,000 per position. And did I miss anything else on that list?
Resource teacher, 65,000. Art, music, and PE.
Art, music, and PE teachers, roughly $65,000 each. We've also done some additional research as it relates to particularly the music staffing. While there are schools that do not have the full-time position, Ms. Chavis and I, Ms. Ingram, Ms. Toh, and others have looked at it and I think we can look at some ways in which the allocations we have are assigned and may be able to get closer to that, to that goal. There are some folks that are within the music department that only teach part-time and do some other support. And so, we're going to go back and examine, you know, who are the, how many folks are part-time that we probably need to roll those folks into full-time building-level positions before we talk about adding positions.
So this is art, music, and PE, Dr. Boone?
That's for music in particular.
Music, music.
That one was music.
Is that our biggest concern of the three?
Well, we were just, we were just responding to the items that you all presented.
Was there more information that you wanted?
I think that covers everything.
Testing coordinator.
Testing coordinator is his position, Ms. Toh, how much is that?
65,000. I'm assuming it's a teaching position?
Right.
So 65.
So in what we have presented before us, these, the requests that the board has brought up, these are not in the budget that we have right now. So this is the opportunity for us to have a discussion as to, you know, now that we know how much they cost, do we want to try to work these into the budget and at the same time pull something else out and determine that? Because on the 20th, we want to try to adopt a budget. And so, we're going to need to have clarity on what the board has as far as its expectations in this budget. So we'll do Ms. Martin and Mr. Clanton. We'll start with that.
Dr. Boone, thank you for that information. Now, just as you specified, how many additional math and reading specialists, do we, do you have a number of how many additional for the other positions that we would need if we were to accomplish trying to have that, just for informational purposes?
For art and PE?
Well, mainly, mainly for the GRTs, the attendance technicians, the testing coordinator, because I know we have some already, it's just how many additional?
So we haven't calculated how many additional we would need. We just did the cost estimates.
Just the cost, okay.
The attendance techs, as you said, we have six full-time, but they are itinerant. They serve multiple buildings. And with the gifted resource teachers, again, you know, we're finalizing that review of our gifted programming is coming to a close and would want to see what recommendations may come from that also. So we, we can certainly get the information to the board as to how many GRTs we currently have and everything, but we just identified the costs associated with it.
Okay. And that was, that was the second part. You just touched on the second part was if you had any projected resource recommendations based on the gifted audit?
Not, not at this point.
That would be incorporated?
Not at this point.
Ms. Martin. Dr. Boone, when you said that you had spoken to several principals and you, forgive me, I'm lumping this together because that's how I heard it, but tell me if it's separate. So when you talked to the ADL principal and they declined, you said they declined the reading specialist who sat last, this current school year, or did you talk to them and they declined for next school year?
I didn't talk with that particular principal. I'll ask Ms. Chavis if she can come up and respond. Ms. Chavis has served as the executive director for that school, so I want her to be able to respond to how that transition happened. Ms. Chavis, just come right here and grab Ms. Smith's seat real quick.
Come here. I'm blinded.
The assignments are also each year looked at based on the needs of each school as it relates to performance in those needed areas, the designation of the school, if there are any state designations of a school, you know, an improvement for any reason. And so, last year, Mr. Smigal made us aware for this year that he was not, he was not, he was going to decline the position. And so, this year, the staff person was moved to a different school.
So then, 18, 19 school year.
I'm just wondering because it seems that there could have been, not just with ADL, but if there could have been changes with new students that maybe this year, their needs change. And so, I'm wondering why you wouldn't ask, you know, we approached that and see if they needed a change.
Well, again, the executive directors do these conversations as part of their ongoing conversations with principals. I meet monthly with principals from the Elementary Principals Association. And so, the day after the board meeting happened to be my regular monthly meeting with them. And that's when we talked about where they saw reading specialists and the needs. And so, a few of the principals, a couple of the principals talked about the flexibility that had been granted by the district to give up their .5 math position so that they would have the full-time reading specialist. And so, we have been flexible in honoring principal voice in this. Because I think, again, we have to be careful that, yes, there are value to these positions, but there's not always a one-size-fits-all model that's needed. And so, when schools have talked about what their particular needs are, we've tried to accommodate those.
This was also expressed to the senior coordinator for English, Ms. Collins, and Dr. Cattaldo was a part of that discussion as well.
Is that a teacher at ADL?
The position. When the positions were being assigned and there were concerns that were noted by Mr. Smigal, that was a part of a conversation between me, Mr. Smigal, and Dr. Cattaldo and Ms. Collins was also made aware.
Okay, because he's not, ADL's not, are they represented in the elementary school?
They are. This is a group. But again, we had history as to why they didn't have a position this year. And so, that's what I wanted to bring back to the board.
I'm just, my concern is that across the school district, to, I don't, I wouldn't want to see things slip this year based on a decision based on last year's knowledge.
Right. So this is the first year that he's not had the position at his request.
And he, I'm sorry, we had the conversation about, you know, needs in the future, that it's very difficult when you eliminate a position, there's not a guarantee that that position will be made available the following year. And so, we talked about that. He even shared, you know, some things that he had in place in this building and he felt comfortable that he did not need that position.
Ms. Campson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So is there a formula? At one time, it was like, back before we went full-time with all of the reading specialists, that it was one day for every 100 children. So is there a formula that's based on size? Is there a formula that's based on equity? I mean, what, what kind of formula are you using?
I get that for you, but it's really just what you mentioned about equity, what the needs of the building are.
And so, what would be the cutoffs for the kind of support you would get? Is there like a pass rate that you look at to decide whether someone gets no person or half of a person or a full-time person?
The, a couple of things, school enrollment, the state accreditation status, the federal accountability status, and also the number of provisional licensed teachers or long-term subs in the building. So we look at what are the resource needs from that position to be able to address that. This, the methodology that we're employing now, while similar to what had been in the past, when we did some realignment of the city-funded positions back in 2016, this is how we got to this methodology of who would receive how many. As I shared with the board last week, that was a one-time allocation request from the city that was granted for $5 million, but did not have a recurring base for that to continue. And so, that's how we've approached and we look at it annually again around what it needs, again, that equity model, what does a school particularly need? We aren't saying that it's not a needed resource, but when your resources are not, we want to make sure the resources are being used in a way that really drives student achievement if a school needs it. And then, as I stated last week also, because 30 of our And then, as I stated last week also, because thirty of our, uh, elementary schools are currently Title I, um, principals have had some opportunities to also bring in additional resources through that. So, I know Ms. Chavis wants to add.
And throughout the, uh, year, if there is a need, if a principal, um, shares that there is a need for additional time with their, uh, reading and math specialists, those accommodations are also made. That has happened this year where, and, and we work with principals on that. So it may be, the, and principals have the flexibility of the days of the week. They, they work with each other on that as to, I would like to have the person this day for continuity. The other person agrees to, okay, that's fine with me. Here are the days that I would prefer to have that person in my building. So they do have flexibility around the, um, days of the week. Again, we have also worked with them. When there's been a request for, uh, additional support, we provided that as well.
Well, I think my concern, or I guess my, my feeling is, is that we should have all of our school staff full-time with reading and math specialists for instructional support. You can be accredited at thirty percent of your kids passing the test in math and seventy-five percent in reading. That's a lot of kids that still aren't reading and doing math on grade level. Um, so I, I, unless a school's at a hundred percent, I'm not quite sure why we wouldn't. I mean, if you make accreditation and you, and you're down to twenty-five percent of your kids, which is a fourth of your children, and then you keep that person there full-time and they, they're working with those fourth of kids that they've been with before, and then you go up to eighty, well, then it's down to twenty and you give those twenty who are, as, as the further you get, the kids are more and more and more needy and they can get more and more support because of course we want everyone to be proficient. Our goal in Norfolk Street, certainly, and I'm sure it is, that all of our children are reading and doing math on grade level. That they shouldn't be walking out the door of a classroom without being ready for the next grade level. And so, and, and so I, if everyone has it with the general budget, and if you start planning a general budget with that idea in mind, then you take your title money and as you plan that application, you plan that within mind that you're going to give to create the equity, those schools that are struggling the most or have the highest poverty levels, you're going to, that's where the title money should be, in the classroom. Buying more reading and math specialists to give a school that has a sixty-pass rate, which means forty percent of their children aren't on grade level, double or triple. Uh, you know, I just don't see how we're spending money for other things when we have so many of our children who are not on grade level. And if we look across the last three years, we're seeing that below seventy percent of our children are not working on grade level in reading and math. And it's, uh, I, to me, there's nothing else more important that we're doing right now than giving the extra help that we need to every child that's not working on grade level, and especially since they're concentrating in so many of our high-poverty schools where, where the children, being poor is not a learning disability, but it gives you so many challenges. It's challenging for the children. It's challenging for the teachers. They need a lot of help. And so, I just don't understand how we can be doing anything. I don't understand why we keep having so many jobs and locations that aren't directly working with children on a day-to-day basis. So this is something that I'm, I'm very passionate about. Um, I know it works. I know it works because we turned this district around before and we did it because we got the extra support in the classroom. I have to be frank with you, and as great as Ocean View has done, I'm not sure we would have ever gotten to those heights without the extra support we have that is not in our classrooms now. Teachers, if you've got two or three kids that are below grade level, as a teacher in the classroom, sure, you can get those kids, get to them. But if you've got twenty-five percent, thirty percent of your kids, how in the world are our teachers expected to do this? This is why our teachers are burning out. They need extra support in the classroom. All right. I, anyway, that's, I'm, I, it just makes me crazy. Sorry.
Well, and, and I, we, I certainly don't disagree with anything that you're saying, but it's not a one-size-fits-all model. The specialists aren't the only resources we have in the buildings. The schools have continued with, uh, some of our Title I schools have brought on additional specialists. We continue to have the interventionist positions that are supported through Title I that also do direct, uh, assistance and support with students around the, um, reading and math support. We, uh, many of those, several of the schools still employ part-time teachers who come in and provide that, those intervention supports. So, again, I couldn't agree more, but it's, it's, there's not, that, if that was the only tool that we had in our box, I could say then we, we were falling short. But that's not the only tool that we have in our box that's available to schools to, to be able to support that. Um, and, and, and I think, again, it's, it's very reasonable to look at it in, in an equity model. And as I said, we have granted flexibility to schools. When schools said, hey, can I trade in my point-five math for a full-time reading, that was allowed. So we didn't handicap anyone by saying you couldn't have done this. These are the conversations that go on where we're, uh, trying to, to address what specific principal needs are and how they get there.
In addition to that, another example would be there are some schools, I give, for example, St. Helena, they don't have the Title I budget that other schools have because of their enrollment, the size of the school. And so additional resources are also deployed there by way of our specialist in the English office as well as, um, the gift, the, uh, English coordinator. And we also have support in that school. And there are others similar to that from our, uh, partners with Focus School. We just completed a guided reading walk through there on yesterday, uh, and, and identified additional professional, uh, professional development and support the school needs. So that's just an example of, there are multiple ways that we're serving the schools. And, you know, like Dr. Boone said, you know, if, if, if it was possible to do it all and if it was, you know, that definitely that need.
But, but let me just respond to that. We had all those extra positions then also. I had two full-time interventionists. We hired part-time people to do, were part-time interventionists. They were there also with that support. And when you ask a principal, they're gonna have to choose to take the half of math away. That's, they're choosing that because they wanna put all their money on the reading, which is where in the elementary we tend to. But I don't think that they're giving up that half math teacher because they don't need them. They're, they're given kind of a Sophie's Choice there. So I think we need to keep that in mind, um, that it, that our teachers need more help in the classroom. In the high-poverty schools, they have so many challenges. They need more help. I, and, all right. Thank you.
No, I wasn't here last week. I was in the front of the skies, watching the meeting. Um, there was training, so great job, Forty-seven. Um, I do have a question though on some of the numbers here. Uh, I see seventy K, thirty-five K, sixty-five, so forth. Is that the salary or the true cost of the position?
That's an estimated salary and benefits.
And benefits, okay. I did wanna go back to the, um, thirty-five K per position on the attendance tech. Um, and so these are full-time positions. Ten-month?
Ten months.
Okay. So based on the six individuals, I guess it's at an average of about, what, seven, eight schools that there?
We have six, uh, attendance, uh, technicians. So the average, their base pay is about twenty, twenty-one thousand and renewed includes, uh, health insurance and benefits, about thirty-five thousand.
Okay, about thirty-five thousand. My question was, uh, the workload, is it about, how many schools are they servicing? Is it anywhere from like seven to eight schools?
That's correct. The, the forty-four schools are divided. Some schools, they may never have to serve because they don't have any significant attendance issues and other schools get more time from them.
Okay. Um, and so I guess this year we're, is, I guess we've had attendance technicians or monitors before? Or is this something that we're?
This is the first year we have the in-school suspension monitors in the elementary school.
The attendance techs have been here for a long time.
Been around a long time, yeah.
This is the time this year that, because they also work in a feeder pattern, so it could be a family that they're working with at Norby Elementary as well as Norby Middle and Norby High School to really better align the resources.
Got it. So they're feeder patterns. So the elementary, middle, and high school.
For the most part.
Okay, great. And, um, as far as with the attendance technician, particularly with the state's, um, uh, new, I guess accreditation model for next year, um, when July one comes around, they're looking at the attendance piece, um, this year. So this is one of those actions that Boone, that you're taking to ensure that, that area, that we don't fall in that particular area, right?
We're looking to continue those six, but as we shared at the retreat, and we don't propose any additional ones. As we shared at the retreat in January and the data that we did, we're approaching the attendance piece from within, from, from district-level support, what's happening within the schools. And the attendance technicians really become that last, uh, that last, uh, place if you have students and families that are so chronically truant that we need a different level of intervention.
Got it.
The ISS will be looking to monitor and see how attendance is improving when we have an option beyond out-of-school suspension for students who violate the Code of Student Conduct and may not need that out of school, but yet need some consequences for what they've done.
Definitely. And so just my follow-up on that one, um, in this and looking at the budget, I've looked over it. Um, in the robust discussion that we've had thus far this year regarding the new state accreditation, um, and some of the different areas that, um, we're watching attendance and, and so forth. Um, Dr. Boone, you were quoting in the paper this morning, paraphrasing the respect that, um, that the budget was created to maintain our progress. And so based on that, um, I, I just wanna know, the budget that you're presenting to us here, does it meet the things that we need, in your opinion, regarding, and not just the numbers and everything, but to maintain our progress and to make sure that we've made, um, hit our targets going forward in next year?
I don't think we ever find a superintendent who says they have everything that they were born. So what, and, and in central services. I believe that this budget is fully aligned with what we need to accomplish and to sustain the progress that we've made as well as bring others on board. Because again, one of the things we've done is how to, in the district-wide redesign model, we're looking at all schools, not just the schools that have been successful over time, but we're looking at all schools and how do we begin to accelerate progress in some places and, and sustain and push forward in other places. Um, so yes, we, we're looking at how we leverage all of our financial resources in a way that gets to those set of goals that we defined before with the board.
Great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So I'll just add a, a couple of comments. Um, I, I definitely understand, uh, the priorities that we have with our budget. Certainly, the paying compensation study with getting our employees, uh, not only increases in their steps, but also some type of a, a salary increase that aligns with that. Uh, fully support that. Um, as board members, we are, uh, we're, with the exception of problem is Campson, uh, none of us have an educational background. Uh, and so we are looking to Dr. Boone and team to bring us, uh, up to speed, uh, on what is needed in the classroom, uh, from an educational standpoint so that we can endorse a budget that we feel, um, maintains but and accelerates, uh, our school, uh, improvement. We also get a lot of feedback from citizens, um, from teachers, unsolicited sometimes when we do our school visits. And the number one thing that they do ask for is, uh, math and reading specialists. And they say that they can accelerate the progress with the students if they were to have these additional resources in their school. And I appreciate the flexibility that you have given, uh, to the principals, to the staff. And I appreciate all the professional development with regards to the literacy plan and the guided reading. But at this time, in our division, with the statistics that we have before us, I do feel that it is necessary for us to look critically at this budget and, uh, and give more allocation to the reading and math specialists so that we can go on that accelerated path in addition to all of the other factors that are contributing to, uh, the success within the building. But I think that those are some critical pieces that we need to add. And if it means sacrificing, uh, other areas, then I think that we need to have that conversation. How many of us are willing to, to, to have that conversation right now to add the math and reading specialists in? Even if it's six this year and six the next year. But is, how does everyone feel about that? Because I strongly, I, I feel strongly about getting them in buildings and, and I want them on an equitable, uh, allocation. So I'd just like to hear from everybody on where we stand on that.
I had a chance to speak at all, so I'd have some comments. So I'm, uh, you know, we worked on the, city-funded math and reading specialists from before, and I was supportive of that then. I was supportive of the concept now. Uh, part of the, the question I had, you know, you had mentioned that in your school visits, um, reading and math specialists is the, is I guess what you've heard most often. I did hear that, uh, three years ago, um, about reading and math specialists, but also heard about, um, um, that people felt that there were so many different initiatives that they needed some coordinated stability and structure and so forth. So, before you got there, my question to, to Dr. Boone was going to be in regards to, uh, math and reading specialists and overall. Back in September, when we had our academic review and presentation, uh, we talked a lot about MPS literacy. And you shared with us, um, several steps over years and framework that, that you've been working on, um, including English professional development and so forth. I guess my question before we go down that path is, um, can you connect the dots for me? Um, this overall, uh, MPS literacy redesign, within the presentation, you had, um, redesigned for reading and math specialists and their roles and so forth. In light of what Dr. Gabriel has just mentioned, I think we've all talked about, can you explain to the board from the overall picture in your literacy strategy, why in the proposed budget that you've brought for us, we have the allocation as currently exists in your proposed budget? And then if we were to, um, uh, ask and request that it be done, that more be added, how would it support the overall redesign and restructuring that you've, uh, that you have in place? I mean, I'd like to understand the, the big picture and not just narrow down on the specific pieces of it.
That's a lot. Let me know if I don't capture everything.
Okay.
Um, when we developed the literacy plan, we worked in conjunction with the College of William &amp; Mary and University of Virginia. And we did, in, included in that development were classroom observations as well as focus groups with, with teachers and others to help us understand what we had in place and what we needed to include. And so, so that, that's that framework piece that we, we've shared previously with the board of how we got to where we are. Built in that is what was needed to support the capacity of teachers to make sure they were effective, uh, reading instructional, uh, staff. And so we had also heard from teachers as it related to the guided reading, that we talked about guided reading, but we had had a lot of teacher turnover. And unless you had been here a long time, you weren't getting guided, hadn't had any current guided reading training. So we worked with our, uh, HMH Hardcore Court, Mifflin, Ho- Holden Mifflin Hardcore, they changed their name, um, partners to design that professional development, again, in support of what was happening. And so we launched that at all grade levels, started with our upper grade levels, then went to the lower grade levels. And then we currently now do refresher of that every summer with our new hires. But then, as, um, Ms. Chavis just indicated, we also have other refreshers and supports during the year. Um, the other thing we did with the specialist positions in two thousand sixteen, because when we asked how were teacher specialists being used in the various buildings, we got almost as many different answers as schools that had the positions. And so that was problematic because it was clear that there was not a direction that would drive a certain set of results. In some buildings, the person was almost like an assistant principal or, or something else and not really supporting the instructional piece, play, pieces. In other buildings, they were very strongly supporting those, those positions. It was two thousand thirteen in, in our research of when the specialists, I believe, were reduced uh, prior to the request in fifteen for these five thousand, for the five million dollar positions, I mean, to support the positions. What we developed in terms of support for, uh, the reading and math specialist is that we designated that eighty percent of their time at the beginning of the school year is devoted to direct teacher support, professional development, modeling lessons, whatever was needed to help a teacher deliver reading better. And twenty percent was direct student support. As we get into the la- to the second semester and move closer toward, uh, SOL testing time, that model shifts where the specialist- that model shifts where the specialists spend eighty percent of their time with the students and roughly twenty percent of their time in supporting the teachers in their work. And so that's how we had gotten to where we are. Because again, like I said, when we asked what were they doing, some places they were full-time interventionists and not really working with teachers at all. Others might have been working with teachers, but never with students. And so that's where we wanted to make that shift. It hasn't been an issue of what's in or what's out. But when we look at what the data that's driving it and what schools need in those areas that I mentioned a few minutes ago, that's how we got at what we needed to do. In 2016, we were faced, and this was pre the pay and comp study. We were faced with a, at that time, I think roughly $8 million hole. We had an $8 million hole in the budget that we had to close. And we were trying not to, the options were on the table at the time, do we increase class sizes, what were a number of things? We opted to maintain reasonable class sizes and restructure what happened with those specialists. The other challenge that we had also with the funds before with those, that $5 million is that we, the district had never been able to fully, to fill all of those positions. We could not fill them. And so that was a challenge also when we faced, when we dealt with that. So it hasn't been an issue of making a decision not to include them, but it's been an issue of looking at the full picture, not just myopically at one area of what's needed for support. The other thing that we did, you know, we talked about all of the millions of dollars that the turnaround partners in those schools were making, and yet those schools weren't making any progress. So that's why we exited and used our funds in a different way. Nowhere near the amount of money that we were spending with those turnaround partners, and yet they've gotten much better results by having them leave and having a single partner focus schools in that big picture. One of the things that the state requires us to do with our schools that are underperforming is continue with our academic reviews and efforts around how we aligning our instruction to the curriculum, how are we delivering it? You know, I'm not anti-teacher specialist. I'm just looking at everything that we're trying to accomplish. And the other piece, I think, to your question is, yes, teachers want support, but yes, teachers also want compensation for the stellar jobs and the hard work that they're doing. And so some of that has become that trade-off. We talk about additional positions in central office. We've also reduced positions at the same time. Sometimes we've offset, you know, we've taken something offline. But again, the majority of the positions that have been added at central office have been in direct support of the schools. In the various IT positions, as we move closer to our one-to-one device and the integration of technology into the instructional program, that's what we want to see happen. And we want to support our folks. So that's a long way to get, and I probably didn't hear exactly what you're saying. It's not a singular focus of how we get there. But what are all the pieces of the puzzle that are there? And again, you know, six reading specialists is $420,000 if we talk about phasing in. You see the impact of the final adopted budget from the state, which caused us to reduce $1.1 million. And we tried to do that with the least amount of impact on any classrooms and yet continue to preserve what we've heard from the board, the desire to front-load success by continuing pre-K. And so one of the recommendations I could have brought to the board is that we don't adopt the additional VPI classrooms. But I'm hearing the board on that, so I've included that in terms of how we balance. And that's kind of where we are.
And I've got forty-five seconds on my question. But in the other piece, just going to where you were going, Dr. Gabriel, if we go down this path, I don't know if I'm ready to do it today, but I'm comfortable with having the discussion. But the other thing that I've heard with school visits and from data that we've looked at is that we also have long-term subs in schools in critical classrooms as well. So if you're going to go down the path of looking at specialists, I'd like for us to also look at what data we have around where we don't have a, we have long-term subs. And if we're going to be able to fund certain positions to make sure that we're trying to address the equity piece, I'd like to see us give that some attention as well. And then also really talk about the equity piece. If we decide to phase some things in, I'd like for us to consider giving the phase-in to the schools that are highest in poverty.
And I don't, I haven't heard that otherwise. I mean, I hear Ms. Campson saying that repeatedly, that...
No, I'm just offering support. I'm just saying if we go down that path.
Right. And we have to have the global picture, but we also have to have the micro-picture, which is what are we doing to move the needle very quickly in the schools that are not where they need to be? And that's where that one-to-one math and reading specialist comes in and in the schools that need the additional help, giving them the extra, whether that's through the title funds or however creatively we can do that. So, Ms. Bessine?
Well, first, I'm going to say that I think maintaining our pre-K classrooms should be one of our highest equity priorities. Secondly, when we talk about looking at the data, you know, talking about, looking at reading and math specialists to dig a little deeper, we're really talking about certain subgroups. And with that, we're talking about special education. And so one of the things that I still have questions around is how can we, based on the data we looked at, we were provided data by disabilities and overall, and we know as a state, we're struggling. We're also struggling as a city, as a district. What other supports can we provide for our students with disabilities that we may not be currently capturing? And should we be prioritizing that as we think about or consider specialists, such as, like inclusion specialists, which is something I've asked about in previous budget discussions?
There's room for improvement in our system of support for our students with disabilities, very clearly. And part of what we've done to address that is make sure that our teachers of students with disabilities are part of that core curriculum and professional development. That has been inconsistent over time. And so that's really becoming a non-negotiable, that the only way that our teachers with, special education teachers are going to best be able to support gap closure is to understand the curriculum as well as the models that we are putting in place. All of our students with disabilities are eligible for whatever intervention and supports are identified in the school. So they aren't excluded from that. And that's anything from, again, direct work with interventionists, after-school programs, Saturday programs, whatever it is, summer school. So those students are included. The gap that we have to really close is from the, between the training of special educators in curriculum and lesson delivery and what our students need and that paradigm shift. We all celebrated me being a special educator. We all celebrated when the federal government made a transition to look at the quality of instruction and student outcomes for students with disabilities. Where we cringed in that work is that they applied a compliance model to the instructional piece. And most, and so that was a disconnect. So they still tried to look, well, do students have this, this, and this? And they looked at that as quality. The other thing is there's not been a great enough shift in our higher ed training programs for more of the curricular focus. One of the things that's been a discussion in Virginia is how do you go back to a different licensure model for our special education teachers than the ones that they had gone that was purely disability-focused and not necessarily having a major in special education, but having some of these other things? So we strayed so far away, it puts us in gap closures. There are some things that I have been developing and will be implementing very shortly as it relates to how we get closer to addressing the instructional gap needs within special education. I've shared my thoughts with Ms. Chavis, and there are some things that we're going to be implementing very shortly to look at those gaps. But we include those students when we're saying what's a school's particular need in terms of the resource and system of supports.
Thank you.
Okay, one more, then we'll go to Ms. Campson and Ms. Parton.
Thank you for that, Dr. Boone. And just so you know, I was also asking about that because when we look at our personnel, you know, we've talked about that high turnover in our special education inclusion classrooms. And we know it's a stressful position there by, you know, the turnover. So that was the other reason for that. But as you mentioned earlier, you talked about that there are many tools to get us to that measure of success. And then back to how are we using our data? How is our, is our data warehouse functioning the way that we want it to so that we can actually look and be able to monitor the interventions that are being used? How well those interventions are actually working to get us the student outcomes that we are trying to get?
The schools and the central office instructional personnel certainly have direct access to the benchmark and formative assessment data that we use to monitor on a regular basis to see what's happening and what changes are occurring and where adjustments and attention and focus is needed. So that portion is very active. The type of data warehouse that the district had previously is what we don't have in terms of everything that's fully available. So we have our internal system that allows folks at our buildings to be able to access that, generate reports and everything, and to be supported in interpreting and analysis of those various reports. We continue to expand and build out that system, but there is that level of access to the formative data.
And is that an area where we should be prioritizing greater support so that we can more efficiently and effectively look at that data?
We've done some restructuring within assessment research and accountability. When there was a vacancy, we made some changes to the job description in order to close some of those gaps and trying to do it without adding positions.
Ms. Campson?
First of all, I'm absolutely, Dr. Boone is certainly absolutely correct in that there's a big movement to increase the instructional skills of our special needs teachers. And also that we have started to look at special education support, special needs support, excuse me, as something that is not instead of, but is in addition to, which is what it should have always been. So if you look at a guided reading classroom that is fully doing that, you have your special needs children assigned to a guided reading group that meets with the teacher every single day for a half an hour, then the special needs students, if you have the staffing for it, would go from there, instead of doing independent work, they would rotate to a second teacher-directed instructional with an interventionist or a reading specialist. And then, so that instead of thirty minutes of direct teacher instruction, they now have sixty. And then they still have the special needs teacher who's coming in, and they are being more and more trained. Certainly, principals are putting them into the same training that all their teachers are because they do come from a higher ed model that focuses on, exactly as Dr. Boone said, all disability and not instruction. So that's a very successful model. But once again, you have to have people to work those extra groups, and not just for the special needs students, but for other heavily challenged children, challenged whether it's high poverty or whether it's, you know, situations that are happening. Whatever's happening, they also need that extra help too. So the more people you put in, the more students, the more students you can give that extra thirty minutes, the extra sixty minutes to. And the more students that you have that are not proficient, the more help you need, which is why I said in the low, in our low unaccredited schools, I think a general funds full-time and a Title I full-time, which doesn't do any surplanning because you wouldn't have any full-time Title I, you know, double things in the, in our non-Title I schools because they're all accredited. If I look at the last three years of reading scores, these are adjusted. Fifteen, sixteen, sixty-four percent of our students in third grade were proficient, met the benchmark. In sixteen, seventeen, these scores are right off the state website, sixty-six. And in twenty-seventeen, eighteen, sixty-five percent. So it seems a little stagnant. And we just need to get more support here. We need to do something about this. Because these were the kind of scores we looked at back at the turn of the century when all this extra support came pouring in. So, and I know that money's tight. I'm not disagreeing in that we have to make some hard choices. But I don't think that we should be choosing as a hard choice between teacher salary increases and teacher support in the classroom. I don't think that those should be the two things that we're choosing between. I think we should be looking for non-direct instructional. Everyone we have in the district is important. And we need every single position that we have. So we have to make the hard decisions about which do we need more. And to me, what we need more is more support for our children and our teachers. That's where all the money should go. You know, if we have to cut other areas, other administrative positions outside the schoolhouse, then that might be the hard cuts we have to make. But we have to do something about sixty-four, sixty-six, sixty-five in third grade. We all know the stories about third grade reading is used as an indicator of how you plan how many prison cells you're going to need in twenty and twenty years. We also know that we have, one of our ZIP codes in Norfolk is the number-two top ZIP code for minority children, minority young men ending up in prison before the age of thirty. We have one of those ZIP codes that's done across the country, right here in Norfolk. And it's number-two in the nation. So we've got to get more support in the classroom. We need to pay our teachers better. We just have to think of some other places to cut. But I don't want to hear that the choice is between supporting the teacher in the classroom and giving the teacher a raise. Those things should be at the top of our list. Thank you.
I just want to go back to teacher support in special education. And thank you so much for explaining the additional professional development and how you're moving forward with that because I think that's for our special education assistants and teachers, I think that's wonderful. But I'd like to see it go a step further. Having a chat with special needs, I understand, people who are trained in special needs, to work with special needs children, understand that. But to additionally support both the special needs teacher and the general population teacher, we also need to cross-train that general population teacher and what those special needs are because our whole goal here is to provide an opportunity for these children to transition to the least restrictive place into the general population classroom. And being a parent of special needs, I know that general population teachers don't necessarily understand the devices and some of the nuances that that child needs and could not make the best decision, given the situation. So I think that having them training together as much as possible would go a long way in helping our children.
Yes, I want to thank my colleague, Mr. Jordan, for bringing it up. And so I went back to the presentation from September with the, about literacy. And one of the things on Slide fourteen that it brought up about the reading and math specialists, and it's this big circle here, twenty-nine reading specialists and seventeen department chairs would support the work. So when I look at that, and I just want some greater clarity around that, does that mean we've got twenty-nine individuals who are actual reading specialists? And then those who don't have them, we've got department chairs who are kind of filling in the work. And the reason why I prefaced the question I'm asking with that one is because I looked at the actual special physician redesign. And there's on both two pages of, I guess, focus areas where there are new assignments, rather than what we would traditionally just see. I'm just thinking, someone who goes in, pulls students out, supports with them. But there's actually a whole host of other things that they're doing. And so my prefaced back to the department chairs, the things that they have to do, including with the math specialist, are we finding success in that? are we finding success in that or, you know, just how's that working?
So the, what you see in terms of all of their responsibilities are the responsibilities of specialists. Modeling and coaching, when they are working directly with teachers who need to strengthen their capacity to deliver instruction, is that instructional support.
Got it.
Then the other pieces go to some of the direct service delivery and intervention. Ms. Campson mentioned, you know, another thirty minutes with someone. That's the time that a specialist does direct services to students. So that's the model of the specialist physician that we put in place to, to accommodate both the, the needs for that modeling and teaching. When Ms. Campson talks about when we used to have communication skills specialists, they really didn't work with students. They primarily, and I was an executive director, it may have been different in your building, but primarily they worked in supporting the, the teachers. And, you know, we can go back and, and look at what that professional development looked like. Over time, I think it's when they began to do some of the direct support. They would certainly help monitor the data, talk about what are the support groups that are needed and all of that. And I know, I see Ms. Chavis wants to add something to, to that piece.
Department chairs would be at the secondary level.
Okay.
So you have the math reading specialist at the elementary level. Because they don't really have department, they have, you know, great level leads. But the department chairs are also being trained at the secondary level to work in the areas of English and math. We also have in our schools that have Title I funds, they also have Title I teachers who are being trained specifically in reading and math. So that's another layer of support in addition to the specialists that are in the building. And Title I schools in particular, there's also a Title I teacher, about fifty of those across the district. And they're being trained in those two areas as well.
So I, I guess, when we look at, is there a direct correlation between success in these particular areas and these actual positions and individuals doing these roles? And I, I'm not even just going to put it to position, I'm talking about roles in the respect of supporting the teacher in instruction, supporting the students. And if there is, and we talk about our number one goal of academic achievement and full accreditation, is that a hindrance from us getting there? And if so, what are some of the things that are courageous decisions that we can make that will help us get there? Because it's not just, number one thing is for our students to make sure that they're ready when they get out of here. But it's also another thing in the respect that our, our community. Our public schools are the center focal point of a lot of different things, economic development, the, the quality of life. And so whatever the decisions that we can make here that will help us get there closer, I understand the restraints that we have. But I also believe that there are areas outside of the classroom that we could potentially take another look at. And I don't think that we've taken a full look at that will help us move there. Not saying that we have to do the whole thing overnight, but how do we get there closer and make sure that we're making an effort?
One of the things we put in place is a, an accountability and monitoring system for our teacher specialists. Because we couldn't document what their days looked like. And so that was shared in, in September too, where we monitor what teacher specialists are doing, their system of supports within the building. So now we can begin to see what's going on. Do we have some specialists that are much more effective than others? Absolutely. And we have not been shy about moving those folks on if they are not being successful. So, so we have made those types of shifts within that work. Anything you want?
The, one of the other things that we've done particularly, we started last year and have done more of this year's asset mapping our buildings, to look at the resources, human resources in our buildings to make sure that they were being used effectively. That there was not a lot of duplication of, or just people just kind of doing things that may not be as effective with the students and, and working with teachers. And so we've spent much time this year in our more high-neat schools, mapping assets. This was an activity we actually did at our principal meeting last month, to really look at your human resources. Math specialist, reading, Title I, who do you have? And what are they actually doing to make sure that it's actually working? The, the other part of that is we, we also challenge that they be careful because as we've had such a focus on, sure enough, the tier-one and just basic instruction, making sure that's strong, that we also don't want, we want to give our children the opportunity to, to have that independent time to show us and practice what they know, what we've been trying to share with them. And so it's while we have these positions, we've also been able to share with our teachers and administrators in particular, that kids should not always be in front of an adult, have an adult guiding them. At some point, other than when it's time to test, they need to show what they know to, to perhaps adults, an adult sitting next to them guiding, but I need time to think it through without someone constantly in front of me telling me what I need to be doing next. So we've also asked them to look very closely at the gradual release model, such that I give that guided instruction, I give that direct instruction, and then they have time. We step back as the adults, even the teachers in the classroom, to give them time to show us what they've learned. Have they really mastered and are proficient at the skills that we're teaching them? So that's also been a greater focus for us.
So, Madam Chair, just to kind of wrap up in the section I have here, and I'll just ask this question. Based on the model that Dr. Boone has here with, with the new literacy program, based on what we've kind of heard here and, and your knowledge, would it be helpful to have more reading and math specialists in our schools? Not saying that this is one fix-all pill, but would it be more helpful to have those positions in the school?
It's always helpful.
Okay, great.
I've said that today. I mean, I'm not disagreeing. But there's also some helpful things we need in other areas too. And, and so I'm, I'm not pushing back. Listen, superintendent proposes a board, a budget, the school board disposes. You give, I've done my portion and updated today. If the board is saying you, it's your desire that some number of teacher specialists be included in the budget for next year.
Dr. Boone, that's where my next point was. So you said four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to get six.
Yes.
And so my, based on what Madam Chair was mentioning earlier, I would be in favor of trying to identify where that additional four hundred and twenty, as close as possible, we may not get to it. But some effort in moving in there to get those math and reading specialists in.
If that's the consensus of the board, then I will move in that direction.
That's just my piece there.
Let me add this also. What I do know about student learning is that relationships matter. And it's consistent relationships. It's relationships with the teacher that they have all year long, not just with the long-term sub. It's relationships that they have with the art instructor, the PE person, the, the person who greets them walking in, the cafeteria monitor. If they can connect with that one person in the building, then they feel safe, they feel loved, and they feel like they can open up and, and have a good learning experience. When you add those extra specialists in the building, just as when you add any, any full-time position person in that building, they're not just going to be contributing to the duties that they have. They are going to take on extra responsibilities, responsibilities that this division has had to come away from because of budget constraints, like destination imagination, like a forensics coach, like running the yearbook or the newspaper. So there were, every time we pull somebody out of the building, you might be pulling out somebody who's adding an extra enrichment opportunity for the kids that touches all of the children. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna advocate for finding the dollars for the four hundred and twenty thousand. But I'm also going to advocate for a music instructor and another visual arts instructor. I feel very strongly about that. Because those two positions help touch every child in the building. They bring parents and community members into the building because that's what draws parents. And they love to see their children perform, they love to see their artwork on display. It's something that they can bring home. And it develops those relationships with the kids. It may not be a direct one-for-one. I have an art or music instructor in the class five days a week, and this correlates to my reading score. But it makes a difference with teacher planning, it makes a difference on burnout, and it makes a difference with our engagement with the community. And those would be my request. I know we've had a lot and, and the conversations that we've had, I, I've really appreciated the benefit of all of the feedback. But if I were to really narrow it down to what my areas are for asking, it would be that. Ms. Basine? Okay, Mr. Jordan?
So I still have a few questions from the budget book to, before we start getting into, you know, what we're going to support, what we're building consensus around to support and what we're not. Because I know we, we all visit schools, we all have different things that principals, teachers talk to us about. And for me, for instance, I hear hands down, number one is mental health, you know, in school counselors, for instance. And so I think it, you know, we have to balance all of those needs because we can't get to teaching and learning if we have students who are hungry, if we have students that are, have other things going on that, that, that we have to address first before we can get to, get to that. And the schoolhouse is that place for, for a lot of our children. So while I understand the reduction in the school counselors, which I know aren't necessarily the mental health supports in the school building, I do think that they are a conduit to helping to make sure that children are able to access some of those supports. So I, I personally would like to see those positions in the, in the schoolhouse. But before we get off the math and reading piece, so in the budget book on one fifty-four, there is an early reading specialist initiative and then the math and reading instructional specialist. And so is this different in, Ms. Ingram and Ms. Tow, you might be able to explain this, but is that part of the ODU cohort, the initiative, or is that something different?
That's state, E-I-R-I.
Yeah, it looks like it's, it's incentive program, and I think that's a state.
You said one fifty-four?
It's on page one fifty-four, under incentive programs.
Is that this year's? Yes, this year's bill.
Yes, in this year's budget plus.
The proposed budget.
And the proposed budget. It's under operating budget revenue.
Yeah, it's early reading specialist initiative?
Yeah.
That's where funding line, the state gives us revenue. They look at what are the test scores of third graders at a certain time period. And their test scores are below, I believe, for seventy percent. I'll go back and double check. Then the state will fund a reading specialist at that particular school. And they will give us the list of schools where they will recommend putting a specialist.
Okay, and that might be regardless of their Title I status?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and what was the, the cutoff there for that?
I need to go back, I'm trying to go from memory.
Do we have any of those currently?
Yes, they are included in the known we have. Because if we do not put a, a specialist in those schools, we will not receive the state funds.
So.
Based on the scoring that they are looking at.
So some, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Based on the scoring, they give us funding for those schools.
So some of the reading specialists on the list that we have now for how many reading specialists from the general budget are in those schools, some of those are being paid for by the state?
Yes. No, I thought all of these, the, the operating ones, they are those. And then we had the add-ons. Let us verify those numbers.
Oh, okay, because that seems like, we, so we're, I would like to have that because are we paying the many, as many as we think we are?
They are operating, they are included in the operating.
So they give us money to add to our operation money?
Right, it's the operating budget revenue, yes.
So, so a, a certain percentage of the money that we're paying for, for the reading, is it reading only? Reading only, right?
There's two line items. One line item is reading specialist. And then the next line item, you may see reading slash math specialist. And under that one, again, if there's a criteria and a cutoff that they're saying if, if our scores are there, then we, the state will fund to provide additional support.
So additional would mean that it would be in addition to the one that we already put in from our, from, so that?
No, they will provide money to provide support. Because there is a requirement for a reading and math specialist.
So that perhaps some?
So what the state is saying, I will give you this money so that you can place extra support in the school. Because the state doesn't require you to have a reading and math specialist.
So a number of the reading and math specialists we have on our list that are assigned through the operating budget are being paid for by the state?
Part, the state share of. Because in some districts, that might be the only way they've gotten a reading specialist.
Right, and I understand that, but I'm just saying.
So we pour that into our operational support. That's what I wanted to comment.
Yeah, could we, I would like to know how much of that is from the total budget for the reading and math specialists?
It's.
Yeah, the total is.
What percentage? You know, these the dollars here?
Yes. Three hundred forty.
So right now.
Thousand dollars in next year in the proposed budget.
So over about six hundred thousand dollars is going, coming to us to pay for reading and math specialist from the operating budget? It looks like three sixty-seven for reading, math slash reading, and two seventy-six for early reading specialist.
That's this year.
So that's this year, so that's about six hundred thousand plus? That's, that's, that's coming, that, that's being contributed to our total? Good reading of this, Ms. Basine. Very good. Thank you for that information. So, so would it be possible then for us to have the total amount of money we're spending for the general budget, reading and math specialist, that would include this amount of money?
We could give you the total cost of all of the reading and math specialists we have, based on their salary infringement.
Yeah, the, the ones that are paid from the operating budget. Thank you.
They all, yeah, right.
Because you have some Title I's too.
And we can show those that are paid, we can identify the number of additionals that are paid through Title I.
Thank you.
Did you have another question?
Um, no, you go ahead.
So I appreciate the question that Mr. Clayton asked earlier about the, when we were looking at the September report. Because I think that is the key question. What does the research tell us and what does the outcome show us? I like to ask, going back to something that Ms. Campson said about zip code and Dottie Gaber, which you were speaking to in terms of resources in the building. On page two fourteen of the budget book, there's a chart that's associated with class size reduction. There's also on that chart a three-year average free lunch eligibility that shows it by, at least by elementary school. I'm not saying that I think all these numbers are completely reflective of what is actually in the building. But, but a couple of things I'd like to offer as input as we go down this discussion of extra resources, which again, I'm supportive depending upon how we flesh it out. So one, I just want to offer a caution, you know, all of us have talked about conversation that we've had when we visit buildings. You know, those are our personal anecdotes. I think we have to be careful that we don't take all little slices of exposure and then give it to the whole district. I think that's the superintendent's job to really have that big picture. But in this chart, you can see lunch eligibility. And you can see we have a significant number of schools that are, let's just, I'll just pick a number, sixty percent and above free and reduce lunch on this, on this chart. So I remember, you know, Ms. Campson had mentioned the, the turn of the century, and we've talked a lot about the, the Broad Prize years. So I remember a lot of folks didn't believe in that, all means all and so forth. And then right in the middle of the superintendent and the team working forward and as we were going towards the Broad Prize, the argument was made that if we went to neighborhood middle schools, that we would see enrollment increase, middle-class families come back into the district, all these great things would occur. And few did. As a matter of fact, what we ended up doing, we created hyper-poverty pathways for students from elementary, middle, and then eventually saw the impact in the, in the high school. So as we look at these three-year averages in schools and we talked about, talk about resources, I'm still searching for any data that shows that we can resource our way out of high-poverty segregated schools, whether it's in Norfolk, in Virginia, around the country. So I want us to be careful, in my view, that we don't, if we want to make some real changes and have some things, I would say in addition to reading and math specialist and other resources, I think we can also have some courageous conversations around, as we're doing now with our educational planning, around actions that we take that provide more socio-economically diverse schools, that can then provide the support and not have the burnout and the other things that. that can then provide the support and not have to burn out the other things that, that we've talked about. Because I think we have to, in my view, you know, we often talk about, I'm just gonna use Ocean View because Ocean View is what we often talk about. So if we look on this chart, Ocean View is about at 56% free and reduced lunch.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I would like to say that that's what it is now, but back at the turn of the century, where we were bringing minority, majority kids, and it was in the high sixties.
I know it was, I, I downloaded all the data.
Okay.
I was just using that as, not for that purposes, but just as an example, that it didn't have to be Ocean View, it could be any school. If we choose a school as our model, I want us to also put that model in the context of, of the whole. Because I think oftentimes what happens is, even if we weren't talking about 60% school, to give you another example, there's always a lot of language about successful 90-90 schools, you know? And so someone will take the 90-90 school as a success that may happen somewhere, and then say, oh, they had success there, therefore we can replicate that exact same success across the board. We haven't really demonstrated as a country that we can do that. Yes, it exists, yes, I agree with Ms. Campson that it's not a barrier, yes, we know we have seen models of success, but 2019 is very different from where we were in 2005, both in terms of resources and a whole lot of other things. So I just say all that to say, if we're gonna pick, use some models, let's keep this, this in mind. Let's look at ways that we can also impact these numbers. And I just, again, like I said earlier, on the equity piece, if we decide to go down that path, then I think we should provide these resources. If we're going to, as a school division, allow and tolerate high-poverty schools, then let us resource it over time. Because historically, what has occurred is, we resegregate in 86, we promise equity resources, it goes away. We resegregate in 2000, 2001, we promise the cheesy and all these other kind of things, we're gonna resource it, and it goes away. And so we've always found ourselves doing this, this whack-a-mole. And so I just hope that we will, as a board, if we go down these resources, that we ask the administration to come back, not just tell us what they would do in terms of these resources that we're asking them to utilize, but how they would implement it with an equity framework that then as a board, we're gonna commit to sustaining over, over time.
I agree, I agree.
I, I agree with that, and I don't think that any of us are comfortable with hyper-poverty schools. We see what the data shows, we see the situation within the buildings, we see the teacher turnover, and I think that it's a simultaneous commitment. We commit to the teachers and the resources in the building, and then we also commit to courageous conversations, out-of-the-box thinking of how we can work on that. But we're only gonna do that if we make student achievement number one, and if we focus our attention on that, and then everything else that supports student achievement, I truly believe that then all of these other items will fall into place.
Well, student achievement is always number one, it always has been for me, so...
Good, I mean, I, I, I believe that, I believe that, so...
Oh, I was just gonna add to that, and working on the gaps, the achievement gaps. There's no school that's high-performing that has a good spread.
The demographics to have gaps, is my point.
Right, absolutely, but for the schools that do, and back to Ocean View, we were in the 40s, in the 40s. Like, we had a perfect school to look at, at achievement gaps. And even though we managed to get barely accredited by just focusing achievement, 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 we would stood, stood there forever if we hadn't, if we weren't forced by AYP to look at achievement gaps, because once we started concentrating on our, our, our gap kids, that's when everything took off. That's, the school was not high-performing when it made accreditation. But once we addressed those gaps and closed those gaps between black, white kids and special needs kids, those are the kind of gaps, that's the time, 47% of your kids are African-American, then you've gotta close the gaps. If, if, if 50% or 60% or 70% of your kids are high-poverty, whoa, if you don't focus on that gap, schools can't focus directly on it because they don't know who those kids are, because only the cafeteria manager knows.
But Ms. Campson, that goes to my point, because in 86, when we resegregated the elementary schools, we created high-poverty schools with no diversity, so there were no gaps.
Absolutely.
We did the same thing at the middle school. So I agree with you that where we have these socio-economically diverse schools, closing the gap is important. We have a significant number of schools, some who have been that way now for almost 40 years, that have no gaps for folks to...
Right.
Unpeel, or peel back.
So let me, let me get us to, I know that Dr. Boone has an item that she wants to also bring up.
I had some quick follow-up questions.
It's, we have about 30 more minutes for our discussion here. I do think we need to give Dr. Boone and team direction for what to come back with for the 13th. And so if there are items which you know that you have thought about for, for cuts or reductions that you want to put out there, we need to discuss those as well. So I'm gonna have Dr. Boone get, respond, and then let's see if we can talk about the other items.
Ms. Tow has worked on, Tow has worked on, pulled in her system. We dedicate $3.6 million for reading and math specialist in the operating fund. And that does include the funds that the state supports, and Ms. Ingram has the information on what those positions do. $3.6 million in operating funds. Ms. Ingram, will you share the criteria for how we use those funds from the state? Well, the funding that we get from the state, Ms. Campson, that you were asking, I remember I was telling you I'd go back and research it.
Yeah, that was fast research.
Well, I had it in my book. It used to be that cutoff percentage, but with the, with the passage of the Every Child Succeeds Act, that changed. So the funding now is based on, for early reading specialist, are those schools with a third grade that rank lowest in the reading standards of learning assessments will be given priority of state funding to share, to fund the reading specialist.
So they put them on the continuum, and they start at the bottom with the lowest scores and work their way up?
Right.
Okay.
And then for the math and reading instructional specialist, they assign eligibility based upon the schools that rank the lowest in the Spring 2017 SOL Math and Reading Assessment. So that's the data that the state is looking at.
So does it update, does it update year-to-year?
It updates each, each time that they do a biennial budget and do the rebatch marking, they update that information, yes.
So we had those updates, I wanted to provide that.
I have a question about that, just for clarification. So when you say, so am I hearing that there's a, so for 20, school year 2019, they're basing it off the Spring 2017, so there's a two-year gap?
Back to the same thing, because the data considered finalized until the fall, so they have to, there's gonna be that lag time.
And do we know exactly how much we, oh, we do now, because we had that amount. How much we're getting from, then that comes off the 3.6 million that we put into it, okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
So, so if you use that, you know, you said roughly 6 million that we have here and identified in the book, then the district is operating as 3 million, pretty much that rolls into it beyond those areas. So I wouldn't, that's not an insignificant investment, it's a significant investment.
Gabriel, just a thought that just entered my mind, based upon our conversation and Ms. Basine bringing up mental health, and Ms. Martin talking about support for students with disabilities, and we've talked about reading and math specialists, and the fact that these numbers are very similar in terms of the cost for the position. What if the board considered a pool? So let's just take the number, let's say if we were working on $400,000 that we wanted to go to schools most in need for support in the classroom. And we provided the allocation, but allowed the principals and administration to work on a needs basis, what they felt they would utilize for that building. So I know when I was reading Across America, you know, one principal mentioned to me that, you know, he was looking for support for children from the lag time between being identified with having a disability to being able to actually receive supports. I can't speak in the language that, that he spoke in.
You're pretty good.
Okay, but let's say that that principal may say, I like my resource person to help with that. Someone else may say, I like my resource person to help with music or PE. Someone else may say, I like my resource person to help as a reading and math specialist. But as a board, if we provided the, the pool and the resource, I asked the administration to look at the pool and resource, and then allow them to work on a, basically they can report back to us how they decided to distribute it. But I think that might accomplish both things. The board providing direction to the administration for more support for staffing in the classroom, but also providing flexibility for the principals and administration to have some flexibility for determining what they need for their environment versus us saying, you must have this or you must have that. So that's just a thought that I wanted to put out there as we consider putting more supports into the classroom.
Don't we already have that? That, don't we have, when Dr. King was here and he started that, that pool of money, I can't remember what it's called?
I thought they were safety net funds.
Yeah, maybe it was safety net, and then...
Oh, yeah, I'm not talking about that.
The safety net funds are not...
Well, safety net funds, at that time, we, we put, we asked, we went to our execs and we said, this is, we didn't get a certain amount, it was just a pool, and we said, I would like to do any of those things you just said or some other things. I wanted to hire boots on the ground, I wanted a part-time reading interventionist, and I applied for that, and that was my choice of how to use the money, and different people got different amounts depending on what they said. It was kinda like that, because principals loved it. I don't know, maybe we don't have that anymore.
We still have safety nets, it's identified on page 215.
215.
But I'm just taking the concept.
I mean, I, I, I think that's something that we can think about, but, but when we talk about mental health, I do, I do have a concern about that, because the school division should not be the one to, to have to fund the mental health needs of the students. That's really something that we should have conversations with the city, with our local hospital partners, with the state on. And I think that the more that we decide to take on that's non-education, the more we go down a slippery slope of assuming these roles. It is vitally needed in the school division, I do not disagree. But I think that we are being asked as a school division who has a lot of needs to take on these roles, and it's, our role is to educate the child. And we have to start leveraging these resources that we have literally in our own backyard in order to say, we need help, our focus needs to be on what we know best, which is education. You all are the hospital, or the social worker, or the therapist, you come in over here and you help us with this. But it should not come out of our funds.
I don't, I disagree.
No, but you said a pool of resources, and so...
No, no, I'm saying, we could frame the, the, the needs. So whether, we talk about counselors, you were saying earlier about when you have a person in the building, they may be a music person, but you're saying they build relationships with students beyond that. All I was simply saying is, if we go down the path of providing more resources to support the needs in the classroom and in the building, we could still say that they could be picked from reading, math, whatever criteria we have based upon the recommendation.
Gifted, yeah.
Based upon a recommendation from the administration. I was just simply saying that rather than as a board, for us to try to be in a position of saying, ye must have this, we would still meet our goal of providing the resource and the framework, but we would have that principle to have that flexibility, because it's easy to say, I mean, I could give you a whole bunch of things that gets dumped on public education that shouldn't be. I was just using the example of that particular principal when I walked in, and the principal was in his data room, and I'm walking in the Elmo thing, and the first thing he said to me was, you know, you can go do whatever you want to do, but this is what I'm, this is my reality, and so that's what popped into my head as we were having that discussion.
May I make a comment about the mental health piece? I agree, a lot has been dumped on schools, such as this observation thing for the pre-early education. I think the one difference with the mental health needs is for a change, this is coming from the schools out. This isn't something that's being imposed on schools. Schools are saying, school districts are saying, we see a system of support that's needed for children because they are coming in with these challenges. I wholeheartedly agree that there are partners that can support us, that's why we have the therapeutic day treatment providers and all of that. But whether it's a hospital or anybody else, nobody's coming for free. And often when they partner with the districts, they expect us to have a funding source to help offset, or they tap into a family's insurance. And so for those who only do the Medicaid access, then that limits the number of students who get that system of support. And most organizations in terms of supporting public schools may not have all of the capacity currently to do that. And in order to build their staffing, they've gotta have the resources to put into it. But I think, again, so many things have been dumped on education, I couldn't agree more. But the mental health needs of our students are actually coming from within school districts now, and we're saying what we need. That's what makes the General Assembly budget, one of the pieces, so, so very disappointing. And, you know, I can't let the legislators off the hook on this one, because they, they talk about what we need, and yet in the final analysis, two things that they did help. One, they never had mental health services in there to begin with, they had guidance services, that was the first problem. They had some behavioral analyst support pieces, those didn't last. But then you sit here, you talk about counselors, then you don't change the staffing ratios enough to really make a significant difference. So they will go around and campaign, and this being an election year, we put more counselors in the school. No, you put a few counselors in schools because you didn't do enough to change the workloads of those folks. One of the things, when you look at our counselor allocations, and we talk about, we exceed, if we went to the SOQ levels for our, our schools, for guidance counselors, particularly the high schools, some schools could lose two counselors. We have stayed above that because of what this district feels, the board feels about what we need to do. But the state is still giving short shrift to public education in this final adopted budget. It's not good news. And, and, you know, I agree, it shouldn't be salaries or whatever else, and I'm not gonna play the salary game with this board, but I'm just simply saying, remember, in my first three budgets presented to the Norfolk City School Board, not one dime came from the state to support salaries for SOQ-funded positions. Not one dime. That was fully supported by the city stepping up and doing what, what it could to help us with that. We finally get money in, and we still get short shrift again because they changed, they allow these 12-month employees and positions, and then they're gonna only pick up the funding starting September 1. It's, it's unconscionable what's happening with funding of public education in this Commonwealth, and it is not getting better. And we cannot, as a governance team, continue to let folks off the hook that they've done such great things for the schools, because they haven't. They haven't. And so, you know, we talk about soapboxes, this is mine, because we try to squeeze every bit of the juice out of the lemon. And, I've been watching Food Channel for the last seven months. And, no, uh-uh, and then we do lemon zest, we don't get rid of the outside. And so, we squeeze all the juice, we use it all. And, and, and so there, there are a lot of options that, that are out there, and we are going above what the state gives us. The city has truly stepped up, and I think it showed the city's commitment to public education when a portion of the tax increase was dedicated to the schools. And not dedicated to one-time funds or capital funds that sunset, but really dedicated to the operating budget, and that is in perpetuity. And so I just think, you, you know, we can get there. Like you said, Mr. Clanton, Mr. Jordan, Ms. Campson, everybody's asked, you know, what else would you have on the table? I'm not gonna put my wish list on the table, because I'm not gonna continue to stir the pot. There are a lot of things I did not put on the table, doesn't mean I didn't feel that they weren't worthy. So, you, you know, we hear very clearly, we tried to tap into what we thought, and the number of the board priorities where the board members, when we developed the budget. The good news in, in tapping into those and including those, they were also consistent of what the district leadership team and others saw as being priorities for how we build the budget. So there, there was a lot of congruence there. We always get to this point, to the last dollars, we gotta balance on this. And so, you know, if it's the desire of the board, like you said, for some number, I, I, we're hard-pressed to do 12. That's roughly a million dollars.
And that's why I said phasing in, you know?
And that's why I said phasing in, you know.
Yeah, we, we're hard-pressed to do twelve, we, you know, um, even, as I said earlier, even with having the V P I plus new money, now V P I in there, I'm not guaranteeing a one-for-one, nine classrooms because of what that requires. Another example, we keep pre-K, but we have a local match, three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, we have to match that in order to sustain those classrooms, and, um, so, so either, either, either you, you believe in it at the state level or you don't. What you need to do, the, the reason we kept losing V P I classrooms was because the state uses a methodology, rather than add money to what's needed for V P I, we reduce the current pot of those who have it, not related to what a district's needs are. So when we look at the data and we talk about school readiness, it doesn't start at third grade, it starts with what are we doing from pre-K on to get students ready? So that's why, again, when you look at the fact that we have teachers that have met that high-quality rating of five in our pre-K, we're doing the right things to get students ready to be able to read, but yet the state, you, state's model is, if your kindergarten enrollment is down, doesn't matter what your student achievement looks like beyond kindergarten, then you lose V P I seats.
Or even what qualifies you for V P I.
Right, I'm saying, what, what qualifies you for V P I, and so, there are all these pieces, but a- again, I, m- my mini soapbox tonight, I, I think we hear it clearly, that there's consensus that we, we do some work within the budget, um, to address teacher specialists. I will certainly, again, bring back costs for the, uh, uh, music and visual arts, but I think there's some internal work that we can do without having to add a position for, for music. I'm, I'm, I'm confident that we can do that internally, in terms of how we assign folks. Um, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the board the same thing I said to city council a while back, when they talked about our educational planning and I was presenting, and they wanted to know, you know, are we gonna close schools and what we're gonna do? And I said to council, I appreciate the support that you have for what we need to do in terms of declining enrollment, I just hope you'll be with us when the boundaries are redrawn. So now let me put this in terms of the board. We will go in and do the heavy lifting, and I hope you'll be with us when we say what it, what it might take to get some additional specialists phased in to this budget.
So, I just, Madam Chair for Ken, I just wanna make sure, cause I, Dr. Boone, I heard the teacher specials, I heard the music and art teachers, um, Ms. Fessine, the nine, was it nine counselors, how many counselors that you mentioned, the guidance counselors? The ones that we cut out?
It was six.
Six.
Yeah, but we're only gonna do three.
We were talking about three, right?
So it's an deduction of six.
That's based on the state's new funding.
On the new state's funding.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if we're going back to add everything back in, we're starting from scratch on this budget, everything can't come back, and so what I hear consensus around the board, not, again, not pushing back on what anybody has, is there seems to be close to seven folks consensus that reading specialists or addressing a system of resource support is clear. Everything else is a possibility, we did pull the data, we have twenty elementary g- gifted resource teachers, and, um, thirteen at the secondary level, and so, um, I'm just saying, if you're asking us to go back and do all of these, then we won't have a budget ready for April first for counseling.
I don't think that's what he's asking.
Okay, I just, I just wanna be sure.
That's not what I'm asking. I wanted to, I was trying to get to the point, um, because I, I have some interest in what Mr. Rock, what Mr. Jordan says in regards to the pool of resources there, um, but I have, I just have some slight reservations with that. Um, I know we talked about specific roles and not necessarily pigeonholing folks in for that, but ensuring that those necessary resources, we did a pool of four hundred something thousand dollars, um, that there's some type of reporting tracking mechanism to show that those are actually going to the schools of greatest need, um, and they're showing some type of, um, result. Um, and so, I did have a question kinda just before we move into this, and I know we're short on time, but when you said on page two fifteen with the safety nets, how much money do we have that's allocated for safety nets? I know I'm, that's.
A little over nine hundred thousand.
How much?
A little over nine hundred thousand.
Almost a million dollars.
Yeah.
I love it.
Okay, so we were talking about, would it go into the safety nets, or this would be another pool if we did the four hundred something?
So just, just for clarity, I, I wasn't.
I'm, I'm just saying a concept.
Also for me, I wasn't talking about safety nets at all.
Okay, good.
I was trying to forge a compromise from what I was hearing around the board.
Okay.
So I was saying that if we had this, uh, I'm just gonna make it up, classroom support resource pool.
Okay.
And from within that resource pool, there are positions or roles that the administration has heard us talked about, which she's, which I know they've heard, reading math specialists, uh, counselors, whatever the, whatever that pool is, then we would have provided the allocation, we could also focus on where we want that to go. So when we talk about equity, rather than saying that everybody has to have one of something, some folks may be able to deal with a half or three-quarters, some other folks may need to. And even as you look at the, uh, you know, Dr. Boone gave us a copy of the responses she gave to the newspaper in terms of heart to staff school, so Chesterfield, J. Cos. Glenwood, P. B. Young, Southside, Still Ruffner, we could just say, our first phase in in that pool are those schools. So, but allow those principals and executive directors and adminis- and the administration to say, if Chesterfield feels that they want support around children with disabilities, they could pull from that pool. Uh, P. B. Young may say, I want a reading specialist, and they would be able to get that from that pool, so it still allows that principal and the teachers to have that flexibility, but we have met our goal, as we've talked about, providing more resources and support directly to the classroom without tying the hands of the principal, that was my thing.
My only concern is four hundred thousand, and we're saying, well, this person might want a, a, a reading specialist, and this person might want, you know, another, maybe some more special needs teacher assistance, or, but four hundred thousand, um, might buy six, six positions?
Well, I'm a full-time or part-time, maybe some retired individuals.
Well, so I wasn't, see, I wasn't trying to get, I was just going by.
Oh, oh.
We, we asked, we asked Dr. Boone, what would it cost for six positions? When she talked about the positions, almost all of them had the same burn rate, basically. So I was just taking that same burn rate, still having the positions, but trying to provide flexibility versus the board prescribing what they must have.
Yeah, I, I think we need to think about that, I think they're gonna go back.
Oh, yeah, I didn't mean for us to decide it today.
Yeah, they're gonna go back and, um, uh, get to, they're gonna get to, uh, they're gonna look at the budget and they're gonna figure out, you know, where they can allocate those funds.
Could we just say, though, that salaries are not on the board?
They're not on the board for me, I've already spoken to them.
All right, okay, they're not on the board for me either, all right, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I would certainly support the concept if it is designated for our heart-to-heart schools, the schools that are the most challenged, that they have first priority.
So, I, I, um, I haven't heard anything from board members about, um, our budget, our personal board budget, and, uh, I just wanted to throw some thoughts out there. Yes, yes, go ahead. Um, and then, and then we're gonna talk about the calendar, uh, but we, we did talk quite a bit about professional development, and we do have a, a substantial amount that goes towards professional development. I wanted to get a sense of how folks thought about, uh, uh, reducing our funds for def- professional development, looking at what we've spent this year, we really haven't even touched what we had allocated, and, uh, you know, I think that as we continue to grow together as a board, that, uh, we can certainly talk about the, uh, all attending one conference or two conferences, but I think that, uh, I, I would be willing to cut, um, our professional development, reduce it to where we could get, you know, about six thousand per person. Um, and then I was also looking at our, um, our budget for meals that we do, and I was considering a cut of about three thousand dollars out of the ten thousand that we have, and so that's just something for you all to think about, and I don't know, have you all?
Food budget is pretty high.
Okay?
Also, if you can email it out and we can respond to it.
Sure.
You know, I said it the last meeting, you know, I'm sorry, I jumped in line, but I said it the last meeting, and I'll, I'll say it again here, um, it's hard to cut what you have experienced, and so I think it's important that we, you know, to the extent that we could hold it harmless, uh, and actually experience it, and then make a determination whether or not, um, we should reduce our professional development, that would be my only caution at this point, uh, because just as we talk in the rest of the budget about, uh, making decisions based upon, you know, research and evaluation, I think we're such a new board, that, uh, some of us have done a lot of it, some of us haven't had a chance to do much of it yet, and some of us are in the middle, and so I think we should get the opportunity to, uh, you know, do the counselor great city schools and do some of these others, even if we're gonna bring something in, before we make the determination that it's not of value when we haven't fully had a chance to experience it.
Yeah, I don't think it's not of value.
Oh, no, no, that's not what I, but you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
For it to reduce.
Okay.
Also caution with reducing budget line items, uh, for some of the same reasons Mr. Jordan just shared, but also in budgeting, when we reduce line items, it is very difficult to increase them back when you see a need later on in the future for that, so at least give us the opportunity to experience some of that before we start cutting it. Also, when we talk about reducing budget line items, what are we proposing to do with that money? So if you're saying, let's reduce it, where will we put it if we're reducing it? So, so we have to have that conversation too.
It would just go towards that four hundred thousand, the six hundred thousand.
That's what, well, I wanted to say.
Yeah, it would, it's, I mean, it's, 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 I, I, I know that we were, we had a little bit of a discussion about it, but literally, if you were to do that, you could get a specialist position by doing that.
For one year, and that goes back to the point.
For one year.
We wanna make sure that we, whatever we do, we are sustaining over time, and not go in a position where we make a cut, we fund it for one year, then we come back, oh, we need professional development, and then we find ourselves in this, you know, that's what happened with the, the specialists before.
I did have a question, when I looked at here, and I, and I noticed it, um, in, in the stipend that's there. So as a board, we're paying into the V R S?
I'm sorry.
As a board, we're paying into the Virginia Retirement System, V R S?
You mean as the board here, or as the district?
When we receive the stipends, is it going into the V R S, or is this line item here to the clerk that's attached to us?
I have to double, double check on that, whether you can.
Not for us.
Not.
We can't because we're part-time.
We're not even. We work like the attendance technician.
Okay. And just a question that I always, cause I'd saw it and I was like.
We do not get V R S.
No, she needs to be paid under V R S.
Okay, um, well, I, I really appreciate, okay, are you trying to, last one, and then we're gonna transition over to the calendar.
So last week, and I think we've, it's come up in email exchanges as well, are there questions about, um, I just lost that, um, the organizational memberships and training, cause I felt like there was maybe some question around, around that last week as well as, which I, you know, I support, I don't, I, I support the memberships and the training, um, but seeing some of the questions around the M O U with training and, um, I think, uh, some, it, you know, hearing things, you know, with, with the V D O E asking for M O Us, is that, um, I don't know if there's, if anyone on the board is looking into or considering whether we should have training or not train, you know?
Well, the board, uh, I haven't received any feedback from anyone about our organizational memberships that we talked about, but as a board, we do need to talk about, um, our governance training, that's a contract that we have to sign, and, uh, we've currently contracted with the V S B A, um, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, maybe twenty grand, uh, twenty some, and that covers the, the sessions that we do, um, some in Charlottesville, some that we've done here in Norfolk, so, you know, we need to have that conversation as a board, as, do you know, do we feel like we're?
Well, it just seemed like an open-ended, you know, that we maybe didn't resolve that, that question, so.
I, I don't hear, I don't think we have really resolved.
So, and that's a big, that's a pretty sizable chunk, I mean, not a huge chunk, but it is, it's, it's over twenty, right? Or is it around?
Like eighty something?
Around twenty?
It's for, for the governance training.
Right, that's what it's.
Right, mm-hmm, it's about that.
Right.
I haven't heard from anyone to say to cut it out of the budget, I think that would be something that we should hold and have a, have discussion about it, but I don't think that's something that we should necessarily take out of the budget.
Well, I, I, I'm not advocating for taking out of it.
I don't want to take it out either, but I, I mean, if we're looking at other vendor op- opportunities, I mean, before, is that what you're saying, before we sign the contract?
Yeah, I mean, it's a di- it's, it's a, it's, it's two different discussions, it's, let's keep the money in the pot, because we know that we need it, okay? Whether or not we sign a contract with V S B A or another entity, that's a different discussion, but I don't think that we should remove that money from our operating funds.
Would it be possible to have someone from the State Department come in and explain to, certainly me, maybe not everyone else, but to me, exactly what the mandate is from the state that we have to have the training in, so that I don't really still have a clear understanding? I think we've had really good training this year from the, uh, State, um, School Board Association, um, but I'm not clear exactly what it is, cause I have a list of things that I'd like to get some training in, um, so what are the actual requirements that the state's putting, I, I, that's what I haven't seen. I know we have to do it, as, as obviously we should, since we have, you know, we're, so, our district's struggling, but what exactly are we supposed to be doing? And that would, that would help, and I mean, really sooner rather than later to get them in and give us some, but, cause I know you gotta sign an M O U sometime soon.
And, and if I can, I recalled, um, Dr. Boone sharing with us, cause it, I think it was in the school plans, it was in.
School and print net.
I can't, I just remember it being highlighted, I'm having a vague memory, but there were, we were, we have to send plans back around for some of the schools, and it was V D O E, and I remember you highlighting it for us, that the board has to receive training.
That's in the M O Us for our underperforming schools.
For the underperforming schools, M O U, but it doesn't really say in there, other than we need training, as a board, that we're partying, we're agreeing to it, but it doesn't specify what it is.
My understanding, explanation to me when I, uh, became superintendent here, that it's about the role that the team of the superintendent and the board create, and how you work toward that common vision of, um, working together such that you're focused on the things that make a difference in student achievement versus the, the individual things that tend to divert attention away from the work. That was the way it was explained to me by V D O E at the time, staff over there.
Can we get that in a memo from V D O E, just so?
I, I mean, that was a verbal with me when I first came.
But if we got someone to come in.
Some of those folks aren't there anymore.
V D O E, they could just tell us.
Yeah. Okay, so, real, real quick, I'm sorry, I mean, we have to talk about the calendar.
I just wanted to mention, so number one, you all know I'm on the V S B board, so I just wanna declare that before I make my comments, but I also sent you all a email, uh, that described the, uh, process that the school board went through when we, uh, had to go and sign M O Us, what the professional development was about, how we discuss it as a board in terms of making sure that we're aligned with the M O U, and in the M O U requirements, there are things that we're supposed to do as a board, and I also mentioned how it tied back to the movement at the time to, uh, have state takeover, so I'll re-forward that email, cause in that email I shared some of that information.
Is that one of the four attachments?
I can't remember.
Like, a lot.
I'll be.
The one with the dozen attachments.
And I'm just closing, I just wanna reiterate, um, I was simply asking the question to make sure that we had that discussion as part of our board budget, I absolutely am not advocating for, uh, reducing any funds in training, I think we absolutely need it, um, so just wanted to.
Okay.
Close with that.
Thanks. Okay, calendar.
Calendar. Ms. Chavis is here. What we're gonna do today, we just wanted to put in your hands the proposed, um, two thousand nineteen, twenty school calendar. The, um, comment period closes on Friday, this will be a, uh, action item for the board at the March twentieth meeting, and we want to be able to, uh, we were certainly at that time, share. share the summary of the comments, types of comments that have been received around the calendar and our final recommendation. But Ms. Davis, you want to?
So what you have in front of you, I'll just call your attention to some things that are a little bit different in next year's calendar, it's being proposed as opposed to what we're following this year. The first being that, well, we'll continue with the virtual day recommendation for, in November. But also because of a primary in March, we're proposing a virtual day as well. Because as you know, our schools are used as polling precincts. So that would be a day that teachers, principal provide guidance on what they expect to have, once teachers return on their fourth. But that would be a virtual day is what we're looking at. Also, spring break in April. This particular year, spring break comes after Easter. The year we're in now, spring break comes before Easter. So next year, it'll be after Easter. And then, I'm sorry, I'll jump back to December. December, we have two full weeks of winter break. And so, I'm sure teachers will and staff will appreciate that. So, we have at this point, as Dr. Boone has mentioned, we do have comments that are posted, they'll end on Friday. And Ms. Rock will be able to provide you an update on that when we return for approval.
But we want you to have us to be able to see what the proposed adjustments are to it. We, I believe the General Assembly approved the shifting of start, school start times. We, this is not there, so that's another future conversation.
It'll be next year.
So they'll enjoy their long winter break, well, the longer winter break this year for a shorter summer break the following year.
Yeah, if we go to, oh, yeah, before.
I have a question. So, when we experienced the mandatory evacuation with the hurricane, we had some banked days that we were able to use. And then, I think we came in during one of the holidays.
Well, we came in during a workday.
A workday, okay. Is there any discussion right now legislatively about schools having to make up mandatory evacuation?
There was a bill introduced. I would have to go back and see what happened with that bill. I'm not sure it made it out of committee. Ms. Basine's saying, no, don't think so either.
I don't think it did either.
The challenge is, they use that Zone A language for us. And so, usually unless you're along a water area, the Zone A may not be what some folks have to deal with. But it was the first time, the mandatory piece. We're early March, we don't say, we have some language that's prohibitive within the district leadership team and the district. That word, we don't say, it's not a pleasant word. Uh-huh, that four-letter word. And so, in terms of how we've been able to address the days missed in the fall, we're in a good shape right now. As long as no one does that, mentions that forbidden word. I didn't leave Massachusetts for just one reason.
We've been lucky so far, okay. Are there any other questions on the calendar? So we have to take a vote on this on March the 20th.
And we will have a brief presentation. Usually, Ms. Rock comes in and will summarize the number of comment, people who participated in the survey and any, the summary of the themes from the comments.
So, is it, it might just be the way it's colored and... So is there a reduction in the number of professional development days or are they just allotted differently? Because I know, I feel like there's usually two days in March, January...
March only has one day and that's, that's usually, so Friday, we had that. That was the early release day.
Right, okay. Right, I saw that, yeah, okay.
Couple of calendars back, we, there was a professional development day late in April. That was that year we were the last school district in the state to close because all these things have been put into the calendar. And truthfully, you know, as we talk with staff, principals, teachers and others, we're trying to figure out the relevance of a professional development day, a couple of days that late in the school year. So we made that adjustment a couple of years ago.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Martin?
I guess I'll just say this again about the last four days, half-days.
We discussed that in calendar committee discussions and so...
It's just very inconvenient for most families.
But it's very convenient for teachers who have a ton of record-keeping to do and setting up classes for the next year and...
But it seems like that should be their service day instead of having the kids there. Maybe they can get more done.
Oh, well, they have to have the kids there to make 190 days.
Well, I'm just saying, like, that's maybe something we could ask our legislators to change. Look at hours and not days.
Well, it is hours, we calculate both ways. A minimum of 180 days or 990 hours.
Question?
Full days, yeah, because they end up watching movies and it's inconvenient for parents who work full-time and...
All right, okay. So, we're gonna adjourn here, have a short little break, and then we will reconvene in the auditorium for the budget public hearing. Tomorrow is, tomorrow is agenda planning. And there's been a lot of calendar dates and invites sent out for a lot of really great things, continuing teacher contracts, some training sessions. So I'm gonna make sure that we get these dates aligned that Ms. Jackson has sent out the appropriate calendar invites so that we are all in alignment with the dates that we should at least have on the calendar and then make sure that as board members, we're responding with our availability, so.
I have two things. So one, we, is there a way to get like the policy discussion back on here? Because there, Ms. Davis, correct me if I'm wrong. We had policy CMA that we had talked about bringing back for this meeting so that we can work to adopt it, which is the school quality profiles policy.
I didn't hear about that in agenda planning. And in agenda planning, we're pretty good about making sure that policies that need to be brought up in work session, we allot for that. And so, we'll make sure that when we do agenda planning tomorrow, policy discussion hasn't been taken off. It was just, we're in budget season. What do we need to make sure we allocate the time for, for the budget? So, you know, if there are policies that are coming down the pike that we need to make sure we have discussion on, by all means, we'll make the time for it. We are a policymaking body.
This is our most important policy, though.
That's the budget.
And the second item is, you know, so last week, we had a special meeting. And as part of your agenda planning discussion, is there an opportunity where we can try to reschedule that with all board members present?
Yes, I shared an email about that. And what we need to focus our concentration on right now is wrapping up the mid-year reflections with Dr. Boone so we can give her appropriate feedback. And then, when we have our April 12th governance training, I think that that would be the appropriate time to bring back that conversation. We'll all be there, we'll have lots of time. We'll have the VSBA in with us. And I think that it would allow for a better discussion and opportunities for us to really grow with a third-party person in there to help guide us through as we are a new board.
Okay, so as you develop that agenda with VSBA, you'll...
We just got an email to have a conversation with him about it, but yes. So are we good then? Because I did send out some times about meeting early so that we can, as a board, wrap up the mid-year eval.
What, what was that again?
It was about 2:30 to come in next week. Yours went to Ron Jordan, Ravenna Strategies, and that's when I sent it back to you. So, check, check your messages. Check your messages.
So this is the 13th?
We have a meeting scheduled on the 13th and we have a meeting scheduled on the 20th. So check that. You might, okay, I'll have to go back and look, okay.
All right, I just wanted to give kudos to the board. I don't know if anybody saw the email, but we're ahead of the curve. The governor signed, Governor Northern signed the tobacco-free school legislation. And so, we're supposed to go into effect on July 1. But, you know, kudos to everyone on the board in respect that we were able to pass this. And so, just making sure that we verify what was passed is still in compliance with what we have in policy.
And I imagine that was started by two students. Those were the kids that did that. How exciting.
Do you wanna mention any other big wins that we've had today?
Does everyone have their pom-poms?
Commodore Nation is in full effect. The Nori High School Commodore Men's Basketball Team won the state championship. So is there something that we can do, maybe to invite them?
We normally do something, we let everybody in the championship piece in. I also announced that tomorrow, Lake Taylor Girls Basketball Team is in the state championship game in Richmond.
Can we make sure we get invitation so we can be there to support?
Oh, no, the board will do something. We generally have recognized through the board our championship teams.
Or you believe it's not the first. I don't think we won a championship since the 90s, but it's all good, it's good.
All right, that's true. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna take a short recess and then reconvene back for a public hearing.